Good evening and welcome to our Smyrna Town Council workshop to set our agenda for our April meeting. Before we move into items for discussion, I'm going to ask Steve Sullivan to do our prayer. And Chief Bill, will you do our pledge for us tonight? Great, if you'll all stand with us, please.
Bow your heads. Dear Lord, thank you for today. Thank you for another season of Easter, Lord. We praise your name and thank you for the death of your son on the cross for our salvation, Lord. We ask that you continue to bless our town, flee with our leadership, and be with our directors as we continue to move the town forward. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
So, tonight, we actually have a celebrity with us. Did you all realize that? No? Okay. Well, Jett, I want to ask if you'd come up here with us, please. So, you all, I want you to meet Jett Hendricks. And on Sunday, March the 2nd, Jett became a three-time national champion and a four-time All-American at the AAU Indoor Track National Championship in Virginia Beach by winning first place in the country for his age division. Now, Jett qualified for and attended the AAU Junior Olympics for track last summer after his first season and came home with the seventh-place spot in the nation, giving him All-American status. And this is Jett's second season ever running track and winning a triple crown at his second national track meet. So, I think Jett needs a huge round of applause. So, Jett, tell us, how old you are?
I'm eight years old.
Eight years old, and where do you go to school?
Thurman Francis.
Thurman Francis. Who's your teacher?
Ms. Palmer.
And do we like our teacher?
No.
Well, thank goodness that we don't have much longer in school, right? Yes. So, well, you know what? We're going to hope that in, let's see, what grade? What grade? Third grade? So, we're going to hope fourth grade that we have a much better teacher, right? Okay. Well, what is your favorite thing in school?
His teacher.
Um, pee.
Pee? That doesn't really surprise me, especially as good as you are in track. So, any other sports you play?
Uh, baseball and football.
Baseball and football. So, it sounds like we have a pretty well-rounded athlete here. Well, I hope next school year we'll definitely be better, and I hope that you'll come home another track champion again. So, we just want to say congratulations, and we have a certificate here for you. And this says, Town of Smyrna, Certificate of Recognition, Jett Hendricks, for his accomplishment at the AAU Indoor Track National Championship and for achieving an All-American status at the AAU Junior Olympics awarded on this 28th day of March, 2024. So, we'll let Chief Bill take pictures. There you go. Thank you so much.
Did the name Jett come before his speed?
Before.
So, you named him Jett, and then he became fast.
Yeah. Thank you all so much for coming.
Premonition, I think.
Yes, that's right. Okay. We'll move into our items for discussion. And first, we have approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with SEC Incorporated relative to the design of Phase 1 of the Stewart's Creek Sewer Expansion. Mike?
Yes, ma'am. As you said, this is Phase 1, and what this will be will be the design of the dual-force main and lift station that goes with the Lindwood project that's later on in the agenda, and SEC will be doing the design.
Questions for Mike on this? Okay, then we'll move on to Item 2, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with SEC Incorporated relative to the design of Phase 2 of the Stewart's Creek Sewer Expansion.
Yes, Phase 2 would be the gravity design, and it will go from the meadows at Baker Road all the way to 840. There's also a couple of spurs that will come up and take out Morton Lane and Amberton Lift Station and also the new lift station, which is going at Life Point Church.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on to Item 3, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Beach Construction Services for the construction of the tennis and pickleball courts at Cedarstone Park. Mike?
Yeah, Mayor, Council, we've been waiting a while on this, but it is a grant project, so it takes a while. Town received five bids on February 15th to build a tennis and pickleball courts out at Cedarstone Park. Includes, obviously, the six courts each, and then the associated lighting, ADA accessible sidewalks, grading, erosion control, utility install, water main relocation, tree clearing, and obviously, we've got to fill some areas out there. Beach Construction Services was a low bidder at $1,803,647, and Thompson-Hudson performed numerous reference checks for past projects and subcontractors, which is stated in the recommendation letter, which is in your packet. So, we would like to bring that to you guys for approval. We'll remind you, this is a grant project with TDEC for the local Parks and Recreation Fund grant at $1,250,000, which is a 50-50 grant. So, we hope to move forward with this. It is a 180-day project from notice to proceed.
Questions for Mike?
You may not know the answer to this, but how long does TDEC add to that? I know they have to give approval before you can start, so how long will it take to get that?
Yeah, I don't think the approval from now to get it started will be that long, I think, but going through the grant process, I mean, it's probably an extra year, year and a half. It is a 2020 grant cycle, but those were running late. So, I think we signed the contract maybe November of '22 or something like that. Luckily, we selected this project because we had already designed it in Phase 2 of Cedarstone, so it was, you know, a minor amount of design that hadn't happened. So, everything has happened since then, it's just following the grant process.
Got you.
So, does, sorry, so does that mean, how long was the initial project supposed to last? Because you said this is from 2020, but it was postponed, so will we have to sign a new continued amendment for it?
No, ma'am, since then, we have three years to build it. We're well within that on this project, which is another reason we selected something we already had designed for, and we didn't have to build an additional parking lot. I mean, it's all kind of right there already, close to utilities. So, when you look at grants, you look at what you can do in that amount of time between the design and construction, and then you also look at the scope of work, where you can put it, that type of thing. So, it was already in the Parks Master Plan for Cedarstone Park, so it was kind of a low-hanging fruit for us. And I'll be honest with you, the cost, we expected to be higher, but if you can see all the bids, they were all fairly close, which means it's a good job on design.
I think two other things, just for council's understanding and stuff, you know, when we originally looked at this project, it was going to be tennis courts with the ability to put pickleball courts on. And I applaud the, Mike and his team. We had a lot of folks come in and really talk to us about the true pickleball courts and making those full-time, and we were going to change gears and make that happen. And then, if you'll remember, this plays into the restrooms that just got completed out there, so that gives restroom facilities close to the courts as well as the playground. So, it does fit into that master plan that was being looked at.
Well, it amazes me how much pickleball has grown. I mean, it was something that you kind of heard about to mainstream ESPN, you know, and other sports networks. So, it's going to make this place just more attractive and, you know, I was skeptical at first, but I think we're going to have a lot of visitors out there to play pickleball.
And I know grants are always great because of the money, but they absolutely do take more time than if we were doing things in-house, but it is worth it in the end. So, I know it's been a long process, and I have gotten many emails and messages wanting to know, when's pickleball going to be ready? When's pickleball going to be ready? So, other questions for Mike?
Have we used beach frequently before?
Actually, they just, the first time we did was a restroom project that they just completed, and they're out on Huntley Industrial Drive, so they're local. I know they have a Nashville office, too, so.
They did a really good job.
Yeah, we put in.
That restroom wasn't just the restroom build, it was a task to get sewer line through all that rock over there, so.
Yeah, and they've, the subcontract that they're using, unless they say they're using right now, are people we have dealt with before, four-star paving. I can't tell you how important it is to get the grade right on tennis court. 1% is hard to do with pavers, but they'll have to do that, and I think the people, it's the electrical people, sports lighting people are well-known in that industry, too, which makes us feel a bit better, you know?
Other questions?
It's also interesting to note that it doesn't seem like it was that long ago when we couldn't get one person to bid on certain projects and, you know, to have this many bid on it.
Yes, right. Yeah, I was, we were very glad of that, people picking up plans. We tried to hit it right on timing and try to, we wanted to get a little bit earlier, but by the time we got all the approvals, we were wanting to use all that construction season, you know, basically, April through the fall, because it does involve paving. I think we hit it about right.
Right. I also liked using the impact fee money on this also.
Yes, sir.
Other questions or comments? Then we'll move on to Item 4, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with United Communications to extend the town fiber network to the new Jefferson Pike Fire Hall. Carl, how are you?
Hi, ma'am, Council. This investment is critical for connecting the town network to the new fire hall, not only for the normal network operations that we run, but also, it's going to serve as our secondary data center, so we built a specific room for that. So, this is a larger request than most, this is requested in next year's budget to be funded. The payment will be due next year, but we have to get this started in order to have it up and running by September.
Okay. Questions for Carl on this? Okay, we'll put that on the agenda and move on to Item 5, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Safe Industries for the Fire Department Apparatus Servicing. Chief?
Mayor, Council, this is another one of our annual bids. Safe Industries has agreed to hold their price one more year, and we'd like to ask the council to give the mayor permission to sign the contract, please.
Council, any questions about this contract? Okay. Chief, we'll put that on the agenda and move on to Item 6, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an amendment to the original June 2015 agreement with Dray Pack Investments LLC.
Mayor, Council, we're going to tag-team this. Jeff's going to kind of cover the contract, but I want to give some context of where we're at and why we're here tonight. So, as you remember, Lindwood was a contract that was put in place in 2015 with the council. It was a 10-year contract for about 1,500 units to be developed off of Amable Road at Independence Hill. Dray Pack is the developer, and we did annex the road and the property with the developer as well as approved the PRD back in 2015. Since that time, my work with them, working with Mike and the utilities and with Kevin and planning, I'm, I tried to count them, but since early 2019, we've probably had no less than 20 meetings with Dray Pack. They would come in, they're ready to get started, you know, their intent was is to wait till the market was ready for that project to get started, and I cannot tell you how many times Mike and I had meetings with them that, we're in here today, we're leaving here and going to CUD, and we're going to be back Monday, and we're ready to get started, and then six months later, we'd see them again. But they have been back in, and we have been working with them to make some amendments, to do some things that we think are best in the interest of the town as well as, you know, the citizens on this sewer line that they will be responsible for out to their property, but it will open up that Stewart's Creek Sewer Expansion, and that's what some of this stuff we've talked about. We're now going to look at this in two ways. They were, in the contract and by contract, they're responsible for the force main sewer. With a little more time for us to think about it, look at it, and working with utilities, we want to look at this two ways. One would be the force main, and the other would be to possibly do a gravity line from out there that would support that system as well. The contract with Dray Pack, they are responsible for the force main, so we're going to look at it both ways and make a determination, you know, what's the best routing and what all's involved in getting that done, but it'll be important to get bids on both sides of this. Tonight, we're bringing an amendment that will extend this contract for basically five years, but the clock starts, if this contract moves forward and it goes to a vote at our next council meeting, the clock starts that day, and Jeff will talk to you a little bit about what that means, but there will be some financial responsibility that we've changed on their part to put money, there will actually be an escrow account that will immediately have funding put into it, and there'll be milestone markers that they'll have to meet. Once those are met, there will be more money, and in the interim, between those milestone markers, there'll be a bond that they'll need to put in place for us. So, we feel very good about it. We feel like it's, you know, the right thing to do, and with the other development that's going on out there that's taken us, literally, there's now development that's come to the city for annexation that will actually abut up to the Lindwood property. So, it may be that time that we're going to see some of that development out there. So, Jeff, you want to mention the contract?
Yes. As Brian stated, I do want to state that during this, since 2015, when we did not hear as much, the most recent communication that we've had, though, they kind of had a new group of folks on it, and they've been, they've been great to work with that we found the last, past year. But because the original agreement, if you recall, the developer was going to design and also install the sewer, was going to be, for the most part, adjacent to Amable, try to go down through the right-of-ways best that it could, for the force main, and over time, talking with Utilities Director, Town Manager, as they discovered that it might be more advantageous for the town not to have pump stations and those types of things and run a gravity line. And because the original agreement did not contemplate a gravity line, the way that this agreement would work is, based on the original agreement, they will be responsible for whatever the cost is for the bid for doing it the original route. And so, whatever that turns out to be, whether we go that way or whether we utilize the gravity line, they will, their contribution will be whatever it would have cost to do the original way that they had agreed to do. And with the exception of now the town will be putting in, they'll be making their financial contribution versus them doing the work. As Brian stated, there will be milestones, as you can see there, there'll be, there's five milestones that there will be along the way for release of funds, withdrawals, As Brian also stated, five years from the, I believe, from the execution of the agreement, that it should be substantially complete. Of course, we have control over that, so that's not really so much of an issue, because we're the ones that are, will be putting it in. It allows them for up to 1,500 rooftops, and as you can see, the plans there, I talked with Kevin Rigsby, and he's looked over those plans. They seem to be in concert with what the approved PRD is. This agreement does extend, even though one extension seems somewhat superfluous, but it used to be for 10 years, but now it's going to be for 15 years. However, as you know, for a PRD, it's going to stay that way until somebody changes a PRD anyway for us, so really, you could put 15, 25 years, 30 years. If it's zone PRD and no one changes it, it's not like the town can come back in and say, well, this PRD is not good after 15 years, because that's just, all of our zoning, we, once it's approved, it's going to stay that way until someone else requests for it to be changed.
So, the request would have to come after 15 years now, though? Is that what you're saying?
No, they're just saying that they're guaranteed that this PRD is valid for 15 years from the date of execution.
To give them the time to develop at all.
For us, in effect, it's really, the way that we do things, it's really in effect from now until somebody ever changes it, so it could be 30 years. So, that really doesn't affect us that they want it, but that's just the guarantees they want it.
But I think that also, though, I think the 15 years speaks to the, the sewer line has to be installed within that timeframe. But we suspect that the sewer line.
We have to have it in within five years.
Yeah, within the next five years, we'll have that, and I think we'll have it settled in that, because there's going to be a need for it out there, so.
Okay. And so, you're saying that the, their monetary obligation is for whatever the original contract was for them to pay to put in, if that is the force main?
Correct. Whatever that cost will be bid at.
Even though we may do the gravity station?
That's correct.
And that the town is going to be responsible for putting it in regardless?
Correct.
They're not responsible, but they are responsible for financial input?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
And we wanted to really honestly take that part out of their hands. We feel better about our folks overseeing, you know, we're not going to physically put it in as a town employee. We're going to bid it out, and we'll have control. We do have in the contract that they have insight, you know, they can be part of the bid process to make sure that everything's being done on the up and up and those kind of things, but we will have the ultimate say-so over what happens and who does this work.
Design is included in these costs that we're? So, in the original agreement, they were going to be responsible for the design. As part of this agreement, we will be doing the design. So, that's kind of the consideration that they, they have a little bit is, because they don't have to do the design now.
Yeah. You know, and I think one of the things that we talked about, if they'd have put this contract in place in 2015 and built that sewer line at that time?
Cost.
Think about how much it would less, it would have cost in 2015 than it does today. So, one of the things they were very concerned about was, you know, they had a provision that they would invest the money, put the line in the ground, and then they would get credits back on the sewer taps. Well, they're not going to get, I mean, they, you know, they wanted us to increase sewer taps, and we said, no, we're not doing that. This, you know, you guys have caused this to be extended and, you know, the cost have gone up. So, I think there's a provision in there, there, there's a number that they're up to that amount in financial burden, 100%, and then if the cost of the line exceeds that, then we're going to, they will lose discounts on those sewer taps. They will get some sewer tap money back, but there's a chance that the sewer taps $3,500, and if there's not enough money in the pot to build the line, then they're not going to, they're not going to get that $3,500 credit, they're going to have to pay for some of those sewer taps. So, we're going to keep the town financially whole.
The original PRD was approved eight years ago, is that correct?
Eight years ago.
Yeah, 2015.
Sixteen, I guess. It's still the same PRD.
Yeah, nothing has changed on the PRD, nothing's changed on the number of rooftops, those kind of things, and they can't change those without coming in and making that change on the PRD, and we shared with them, we didn't think there was any appetite for that.
The capacity of the line itself, I'm sure it's great enough to handle extending on out to 840 and the entire urban growth boundary out there.
We're already getting some questions about, there's a couple of subdivisions, a little further out, close to 840, there's some commercial development that's interested in going at 840, so yes, absolutely, this, this line will be large enough to carry the basin. That's what we, you can ask Mike if you don't believe me, so.
Does the basin extend any outside of our urban growth boundary, or?
840 is basically the, we actually go to the other side of 840, but it's a very small amount, and if you look at what's going on in Murfreesboro coming that way, they've already built out Berkshire and all that, that stuff, so there's not a lot of room over there.
But the basin itself?
The basin would be.
Does it follow the contours of the urban growth boundary?
Yes.
Very good.
Other questions or comments? Okay, then we'll move on to Item 7, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract for audit services for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024. Hey, Sierra.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We are actually moving that to the next month. We did not have the contract, and we have an estimated price, but not the contract, so we're going to bump that one.
Got it. Item 8 is consideration of a resolution to enter into a cooperative purchasing agreement with National Buy Board.
This resolution allows the town to enter into an agreement with the National Purchasing Cooperative. The contracts with National Buy Board are competitively solicited, evaluated, and awarded. The inter-local agreement will save time and money relative to the purchase of police uniforms as well as other items.
Okay. Questions for Sierra on this?
So, I see it's for police uniforms, but the as well as other items, what does that consist of? Is it just a general?
I think it's just uniforms as the whole.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay, we'll put that on the agenda and move on to Item 9, which is consideration of an audit relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 55, Parcels 4.01 and 5.02 to go from R3 to C4. It's requested by Sami Said. The properties requested to be rezoned contain approximately eight tenths of an acre and are located at 6070 and 6092 Seminary Road, and this is a second reading. Hey, Kevin?
Hello, Mayor and Council. Yes, this is the request. It is on second reading. It's a R3 to C4 request, corner of Seminary Road and Poplar Wood Road. Land use plan will support medium density, single-family in this area. It's surrounding zoning is the mix of R1, C2, and I2 in town and RM in Ruthford County. There is an existing house on these properties, they're wanting to reuse that house into commercial use. They will have to extend sewer as well as meet all the building and codes and site plan, and come in with a site plan to meet all of our requirements to convert it to a commercial use. The planning commission did review this, did recommend approval. Staff would recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this one? Okay, then we'll move on to Item 10, which is a presentation of.
Let me ask an unrelated question to that. We talked about, and I don't know if it's a Brian or a Tom question or what, but we talked about looking at changing the stop sign configuration of Poplar Wood out there.
Tom, you want? Yes, we had, we had done a traffic study for that intersection, Poplar Wood and Foxland. We have a Myo Vision camera system, we set out there, counted cars, and sent that to Myo Vision, we got the results of it, and basically, it does not warrant, doesn't meet the minimum warrants for a three-way stop or an all-way stop. That's per MUTCD, you have to have, I think it's an average of 300 cars per hour over an eight-hour timeframe, and then 200 on the side streets, so 300 on the main, 200 on the side streets, and the side street just didn't come close to meeting that requirement. There's some other requirements that it could have met, but it didn't meet any of them. As far as like crashes, we looked at those, the latest crash was back in 2017. You have to have, I think, a minimal five crashes per year for it to be a dangerous intersection. Also, if it's a high number of pedestrians in the area, it could be a danger there, but there are no pedestrians walking through that area. I sat there early in the morning and watched it during schooltime traffic as well as the PM schooltime traffic as well in the afternoon, and I did not see any issues. And then, like I said, we did the formal study where we had the camera go out there and count cars, and it did not meet the minimum requirements for a three-way stop.
What about some of the complaints we've heard is, you're on Poplar Wood to turn left onto Foxland, and they're having to sit for long periods of time. Did you see that?
During schooltime traffic with heavier traffic, I saw a car sit for maybe 20 seconds, maybe 30 seconds at the most, before they were able to take a left on Poplar Wood going up to that intersection, so the leg coming into the T, there is a dedicated left turn, there's a right turn, so that car was not blocking anybody from making that right turn to go toward the schools.
There was some concern about another turn radius on this.
Yes. Glad you brought that up, but one of the things that I did notice is that when a bus was coming up to the T intersection of Poplar Wood, they would have to wait until there was no traffic and no cars coming on the southbound leg of Poplar Wood, because they had to swing out into oncoming traffic to make that turn. There's a large tree in the way as well as possible. There's a large tree in the way, as well as possibly a, um, mailbox at that corner lot, the one with the red, the red roofed house. So, well, Brian, we're getting with a consulting company to look at, um, uh, traffic movement through there. They're going to do a little turning movement study and see what we need to do to maybe increase the radius, uh, to make it to where buses don't just swing out.
Other questions?
Yeah, just put a roundabout there and call it good.
Yes, sir, we'll get it started tomorrow, should be done by the end of the week.
This is the end of the week.
I'll get those mast arms out there, too.
Other questions?
If you don't eat them, you can put a roundabout in.
Yeah, we'll just put them out there anyway.
We did take a look at it, and, you know, we do have to meet a certain amount of standards to, to make those implications on the streets, and it, it does not, if that was not done in-house, we did send that out to an engineering, for an engineering study, so, uh, you know, it's, it's just not something right now that's, that's going to show.
But there's a warrant.
The warrant for it.
Okay, then we'll move on to item ten, which is presentation of commercial and residential evaluations for the twenty twenty-three year.
Mayor and Council, what we do every year is, uh, in our coach department, we review the commercial and residential developments for trends for the town of Smyrna. Uh, project valuations are based off of permits that are issued. For twenty twenty-three, there's an estimated three hundred and twenty-three million dollars worth, over three hundred and twenty-three, three hundred and twenty-three million dollars worth of commercial residential accessory structures. As you see by the chart that we have, our commercial industrial, we had about, uh, over sixteen hun, sixteen, one point six million square feet. Um, residential, two point one, and then miscellaneous residential accessory structures are your garages, your porches, your decks, and i- items such as that. Uh, for a grand total of just square footage is three point eight million square feet. Um, that valuation is usually based off the estimates, the evaluation that we have for permits. Um, as a comparison, in twenty twenty-one, uh, we did about a hundred and eighty-five million and just over two million square feet. And then in twenty twenty-two, just over two hundred and nine million with, uh, three point two million square feet. Uh, as you can see, we're, uh, still growing and still growing poss, uh, still growing at a, at a, at a large rate. And a lot of the valuations also can be better still at the price of goods that are being purchased and what it costs to build these, these structures. Um, yeah, move a little bit forward, we go to residential permits. Um, before I get to residential, let's tell you about some of the bigger projects. We have the vintage, which is three hundred and twenty-five units, liveaway suites, courtyard by Marriott, Hyatt Hotels. We just had a plan review for the Echo Hotel, which will be located, um, next to Coles in that area. And obviously, we have Champy's Restaurant. Uh, out of the total square footage, we also have eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand square feet, which goes to South Park, and the majority of that is for the Pepsi Project. And then the other one would be, uh, for the Troton Drive is about three hundred and seventy-four thousand square foot that we have. Moving to residential, as you can see, the, the trend is, um, this year compared to previous years, we're almost doubled. Uh, in twenty twenty-three, four hundred and seventy-nine, single-family unit permits, single fa, single-family attached permits, three hundred and seventeen, and apartment units, four hundred and forty. What you have to be careful with the apartment numbers also is when it's approved, it takes a while for that to get approved. And so the duration of when it gets approved and a permit issued to where we can actually issue COs, or a little timeframe, that's why you have a zero in twenty twenty-two. Um, in the residential section valuations, the residential permits obviously rose. Individual residential valuations range from a hundred and forty-six thousand for a home to five hundred and eighty-one thousand for a home. Uh, some of our larger builders, Lennar Homes, uh, had the most permits with a hundred and ninety-eight, Ryan Homes had a hundred and ninety-six, and Harpeth Valley came in third place with eighty-six permitted, permitted properties. And that's just a real brief overview of the valuations and the permits issued for our coach department.
Questions for Todd on any of this?
Todd, I appreciate you bringing up the, uh, comment about the apartment units. Uh, to my recollection, we are pretty much out of any, is there any zoning left? Very little that could be permitted for apartment use.
The only one that, that really has any significance is that property next to, uh, the Smyrna High School there on the right, that, that is zoned.
It's still zoned R six, as I recall.
Still zoned R six, uh, there's.
Other than that, though, we're almost really out of the properties that were zoned correctly initially.
That's correct.
So.
I was thinking there was a couple of other very, very small pieces.
There, there's some slivers here and there, but it would not produce anything to the magnitude of these type projects. And, you know, keep in mind that, uh, on Sam Ridley, on the backside of the Waldron property that's being developed now.
That was all zoned.
That was all zoned R six, and it's still, you know, some of it's zoned R six. You've got the, the Vantage, uh, the, I think there's two to three phases of it, and then there's Marlowe, uh, right in front of it, and they're moving dirt on that, which would front, uh, the, uh, Mottlo. And then there's a piece that wraps around from Mottlo Drive back to Sam Ridley, uh, that kind of encompasses around the YMCA. There is a project that's been approved, but it's a little bit gone dormant right now, we're not sure what's going to happen with that one. But the, the Vantage and the other one are probably the last two, any significant sized apartments that we'll have. Other than, like I said, that's, that piece of property next to, uh, the Smyrna High School.
Another parcel that you were talking about that's up at Mottlo, that's been, that's been gone dormant, is that R six also, or I mean?
All of that property was R six.
Well, I know, but it's all PRD now, but what about that parcel you're referring?
Well, the PRD portion of it was really to give us a little more control over that R six product. They could have just come in and done vinyl boxes.
But it's mucked up, so to speak.
But it's, yeah, the PRD that was approved was for apartment, for rental.
It was for apartment, it was apartment, that was the one, the R six piece is the Marlowe. And then the PRD that's around the YMCA is, that was second wave, or O R O was what it was going to be called. That was apartments, single family and duplexes.
But all rental property.
That was all, that was a PRD.
I remember that, because they talked about being housing for the students and such, as that was the way they referenced it, wasn't it?
Yeah, and that, that's the one that's gone dormant.
They were out of Florida?
Yes.
And it's zoned what today, R?
It's a PRD.
It's a PRD. It's rental, it's, it's.
It was for all rental property.
It's approved for rental property.
And the majority of the housing units were in apartments.
Gotcha.
And just for consumption purposes, the R six zoning that was there has been there for a lot of years, lots of years before any of us, and so.
Since the Parkway came in.
Since the Parkway. And so, um, by doing a PRD, we helped the town have some oversight on what could have been something a lot different, probably a lot worse. I mean, it could have been just simple square vinyl buildings, you know, and so by, by attaching the PRD to it, it gave the council and the plan commission oversight to make sure the product was designed, reviewed better, uh, amenities were better, all those things. So it was a plus for us, I think, for the town. Because we had what we had, we couldn't change it. I think the public sometimes thinks we can change something, and we just don't have the authority to do that, so.
Other questions or comments? Todd, thanks for putting this together, and can you email just those, just this part to us? That'd be great. Okay, um, Brian, I think you have something under other.
Yes, ma'am, uh, I've got a couple of things I wanted to bring up. On your desk, uh, under other, I had placed a sheet. Uh, as you're familiar with the, uh, the area that we used this past, uh, holiday season for the ice rink, uh, the Parks Department did a great job of going down there and developing that and getting it flat and everything and building it up. And we've been talking about, you know, moving that for the summer and, and putting the grass back and stuff, and I told Mike, uh, you know, we ought to look at, what can we do that would make it easier for us to be able to put the ice rink back there next year since we purchased that and own it? But then also make it usable versus just, you know, building up the gravel base and put, taking it up, taking it down, those kind of things. So on your desk, you'll see a, uh, a couple of ideas that we had, and I've circled one of those, uh, that, that's kind of the direction. After sitting down with Mike and his staff, and Rex and I, we talked about what we'd like to do. Uh, but basically, we'd like to turn that into a permanent, uh, area there, uh, by putting an asphalt, asphalt base down three and a half inches, and, uh, and then turning that into three pickleball courts that could be used on the, you know, this side of, of Smyrna versus, you know, where Cedarstone will have six. Uh, we do have some up at, uh, the, uh, Rosenwall, yeah, Hilltop, uh, that, that they can use. But this would give three more full-time pickleball courts, and then SOAC could use it like when they're using their camp, when they have their camps and those kind of things. And then when the, the season comes back for the ice rink, we'd have a permanent structure, you know, base that we could put the ice rink up on for the seasonal use of the ice rink. So we do have the money and the budget, uh, we didn't have a line item for this, but we do have the, the funds available to do this. So what I'd like to ask is for, for permission for us to move forward and put the pickleball courts in and have those available for our citizens to use this summer and going into the fall, and then that would become the, uh, ice rink permanent home, uh, for going forward.
Can you explain the difference between the asphalt base two, is it two inch, two inches versus three inch?
We looked at the two inch, and we looked at the three and a half inch. Three and a half inch just gives you a better base, and you don't have as much deterioration, and then also when you put the ice rink down, uh, it's a, a, a better structure for that.
Okay.
When you think about the two inch, you know, it's kind of like with the roads, you know, if you, the thinner you go, the, the more wear and tear they're going to take. So the difference in the, uh, and the cost between the two-inch base, you know, and going to the three and a half inch base is kind of a, you know, much better place for us to be.
And that was better than the, what's the difference with the concrete? You had that as an option as well?
Yeah, if you look at the concrete, you know, it, it was quite a bit more.
So the expense is what made you decide on the asphalt?
And then, you know, concrete, you know, asphalt's going to crack, but so is concrete. So we, we felt like on the small area that we were doing, you know, just like the tennis courts up at, uh, the park now, or, or asphalt, what we'll be doing out at, uh, Cedarstone will be asphalt, so it, I think it's.
Consistent with what you're doing.
It's consistent with what we're doing.
Is it relatively inexpensive to equip it then as far as?
This, this price includes everything, the, the lighting, uh, the striping for the pickleball, this will be all inclusive, yes.
Uh, is there any type of, uh, fencing as far as a backstop or something that we?
We talked about that, uh, we may have to come back and put some fencing, but, uh, that's relatively inexpensive from the standpoint. We wouldn't have to put, you know, twelve-foot fencing and stuff, this would be smaller fencing.
Something that would be removable during the winter now?
Yeah, that's what we want to look at, is what, what do we need? We may use some sort of backstop, you know, or something.
I appreciate you all looking into ways to use it year-round, and I think we, you've already talked about it, Tim, the pickleball is such a sport that's taken off that I think adding three more courts is something that will definitely be used. And then when people are usually not using it during those cold winter months, and we're able to use the ice rink there, I think it's win-win for everybody, so.
Well, and again, I think for the SOAC camps and stuff, that'll be a place for them to be able to go out and, you know, they can do four-square, things like that outdoors, they can, uh, do different things. So it'll, it'll be a more all-inclusive use, so.
What's the timeframe on this? I think that's a real plus, isn't it?
I, I think we can move forward, I mean, Mike and I have talked about it, if, if you guys are good with this, we're going to move forward with it. Again, it's, it's not a budgeted item, but we do have the surplus, you know, we've, we've got, we've accounted where we can get the money.
So a couple of months, three months?
What do you think, Mike?
Give us a date, Mike.
And we're not going to give you a date.
Um, if y'all give us a head nod, we'll start on the next couple of weeks.
Tom is going to be done with a roundabout by the end of the week.
Yeah, when they get done with that, he can come over and help us.
And Tom's going to have to wear that Britney Spears shirt.
Uh, I would say a couple of months. We'll get our work done pretty quick and then be waiting on the paving company to knock that out, so. Uh, I will add about the concrete, it is a little bit harder to, to color the concrete more hard than it would be to, or more difficult to do that than it would be to, to paint stripe paving, so that helps you out.
Asphalt's easier on the ankles and legs, too.
It is, it is, so.
I just wanted to understand better your choice, since you had all three as options, so I was trying to figure out your thinking.
Yeah, and the paving, I mean, Brian's spot on, it's specked out like that for the other courts. I actually use that, uh, two-inch asphalt, usually used on walking trails where you don't have traffic, and, uh, even that has to be worked on sometimes.
Okay.
But we'll start quick, we're, uh, we actually, when Brian and I talked, we kind of, kind of got done with some parking lots and mountain bike trail, and we're going to move that crew down to knock this out. We'll reuse the stone that's already there.
Other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else under other, Brian?
Yeah, just real quick, Mayor, if I could, I just wanted to acknowledge, uh, tonight, uh, at your desk, you've got your budget books as we go into this season of budget. We'll be looking at our budget retreat coming up on April the eighth. Uh, this gives you plenty of time to go through the books, and if you have questions, uh, don't hesitate to reach out and ask those as we, uh, get ready to go into it. But I also wanted to thank the finance department, Sierra and her team, Amber and Casey, uh, they've put a ton of work into, you know, Rex and, and our team put together the budget, but then we got to get those books together. Uh, all the directors getting their information in for their presentations and stuff, that's all in there for you, so, uh, I just want to acknowledge the work that's been done, especially in the last couple of days. I think we've got, we owe the legal department a new copy machine, I think we wore theirs out, but, uh, you guys did a great job, and thank you. Mayor and Council, the two other things I was just going to mention under other tonight, and these, I don't want to get into, most of you guys want to get into long discussions about it, but, you know, T Dot was here, uh, what, a month or so ago, and made some presentations, and I know some of our citizens have seen those presentations. Uh, they're still available, if you want to go back on YouTube or on, uh, the town, uh, website and, and relook at those. But I've had several questions, uh, come to me, and I'm sure you guys have had these as well, so I just wanted to reiterate tonight. Uh, one of the biggest questions is Jefferson Pike at Lowry Street, you know, what's, what's the status of that project? And it's, uh, to remind you, it's what T Dot told us, uh, that, that project is moving forward. Uh, they anticipate, and Tom or Charles, uh, they're anticipating bid by the end of the year, uh, on that project. And that project will be encompassing not only a red light at, uh, Jefferson Street and Lowry for that intersection, we know that's a very dangerous intersection, but they're also going to be doing the ramp work at the bridge that exits Sam Ridley onto Lowry Street. And where we have those sweeping turns that feed into those, and then coming the opposite way into Smyrna, you have that conflict with the traffic trying to go across, those kind of things. Those will be fixed, there'll be red lights at those two intersections as well, and those sweeps will go away, and they'll become stoppable ninety-degree turns on both sides. So that project is moving forward, and like I said, should be bid, uh, towards, uh, the fall of this year, and then the work will be, uh, soon to follow. The other one is, I know, uh, this is a, a source of, uh, issue for a lot of folks in our community that live out on the Amleville Road area, and with us talking about a project on Amleville Road tonight, uh, that's, that may be coming forward, uh, that just adds to that traffic out there. But, you know, Amleville Road, unfortunately, uh, as T Dot pointed out, until they get the Choice Lane, uh, project worked out, and they get the design for that, those intersection or interchanges, basically, anything from eight forty into Nashville is, is kind of a moot question, uh, for them to do anything. Uh, even to the extent, if we want to go down there and hand them a check and tell them this is what we think it'll cost to fix that, they're not going to do it until the, the Choice Lane, uh, program is, is in place and out to bid. So, uh, they hear us, we're continuing to talk with them, I, I know I've had a couple of conversations, I know the mayor and I have, uh, had conversations with them. Every time we go to the MPO every month, uh, we're reminding them that, you know, that is a source of contention for our community, and, uh, we all see the pictures on Facebook, and, and we get the comments on Facebook about people and the traffic out there and, and those kind of things. But I, I don't know that I have an, an answer for you as your town manager of how we could fix it. Uh, it's just one of those things that it's a T Dot issue that we're going to have to work with them and continue to, to resolve that issue with them, and they've got a timeframe that, uh, you know, we, we thought we were headed towards a resolve, because that interchange, just like Sam Ridley, had some, uh, work that was going to be done, and Sam Ridley was actually going to bid this year, and they have pulled all of those projects. And T Dot's, you know, uh, I think Jay was very honest with us when he was here, until this Choice Lane project is, is, uh, developed, uh, and the, uh, engineering's done on it for the, the design, I don't know that we're going to, we're just going to have to bear with some of the issues. Uh, I wished I had a better answer for you.
Other comments?
All I have.
Him, oh, um, Hal? Sierra? Charles? Carl? Mike? Tom? Kevin? Mike? Cut? Chief? Chief?
Wow.
It's like college class, you know, everybody's ready to go, nobody say anything.
That's impressive.
Amber?
No, ma'am.
That's the first time Charles hasn't had anything in years.
Be nice.
You want me to ask him some questions?
Ask him one question.
Brian?
Mayor, Council, I do have a couple of slides I want to share with you tonight. This one's always fun for me. We have our Natural Gas Utility Workers Day. Let me, let me go back. This one, this one has been added at the last minute. I thought it was towards the end, so they put it at the front. I apologize. We were contacted, the National DEA Drug Takeback Day is Saturday, April the 27th of this year, 2024. And our Police Department will be working with them. So during the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. on April the 27th, 2024, at the Smyrna Police Department, we will have people doing a medicine and drug takeback. You can bring anything the questions ask, pills, vape, needles, you know, anything in your home that, that you're no longer using and want to dispose of. We will make sure it gets taken care of in a, in a proper manner. Any, you know, any past drugs you've had that were prescribed, any drugs you had that maybe weren't prescribed that you get rid of in your life, you can bring those by. You know, we have diabetics that use needles and insulin and those kind of things. And sometimes they'll have boxes of needles and they just want to get them out of the house. This is a good way to get rid of those. But there, it's, it's safe. It's anonymous. We don't ask any questions. But during that timeframe, there will be people there to take care of that and get it destroyed in a proper manner. Okay? Now, now, the National, Natural Gas Utility Workers Day, we just recently celebrated that. As most of you know, I spent 30 years in the natural gas business, so this is always special to me to recognize this group of guys and the work they do. And sometimes we don't think about all the work they do. They don't just read meters and bring it in and send bills to customers. You know, many times at, at night, they're out there on a line break or, you know, a construction site in the winter. There's things that happen. And I, I know this past winter, we had a couple of nice letters come in referencing some of our folks and the work they did to get their gas back on or to get their units relit and those type of things. So we just appreciate, and they're serving over 12,000 customers here in Smyrna and Laverne, because we do serve the natural gas in Laverne. Just want to say thank you to that group of guys and the work that they do. Also, to the utilities folks here at the office that work in the, the gas sites, wells and water and sewer, the ladies in the office, the whole group. Just thank you for the dedication and the work you provide. Want to remind everybody, we're still looking for some folks to work at the Smyrna Parks Recreation for seasonal help on the pools, lifeguards, head lifeguards, splash pad, gatehouse, those kind of things. You can go online and visit Government Jobs at Town of Smyrna, and it's on our website. So there's still some good jobs available for folks. Also, we're hiring for the SOAC team and seeking for, Mike prefaced, these are hard-working individuals that have to be at least 18-years-old to help our team with our summer programming. Again, those summer counselors and panel adventures assistants are available. Those positions are available. Again, you can go on our website and apply for those jobs. Tomorrow's Good Friday. Just want to remind everybody in the community that the town offices will be closed tomorrow, but I always like to recognize that we, we don't close the town. The golf course will be open, and it's supposed to be a beautiful weekend. So through this weekend, come out and see Hal and his group. One of the best hot dogs in town. I'm not much of a golfer, but I've had lunch out there a few times. But, you know, our Police Department, our Fire Department, our Water and Sewer, the plants will be operating. So we appreciate those folks for doing what they do to keep our community safe. Of course, I always end with love where you live. It is something that's important, I think, to the Town of Smyrna. But my friend down at Seven Oaks that we recognized a couple of weeks ago, he sent me something, and I wanted to share with you. How does littering affect the environment and local wildlife? This is another aspect of what litter does besides, you know, take away from the beautification of our community. And it says, toxic tidbits. Animals like deer, raccoons often mistake litter for food, leading to ingestive harmful materials and injuring them and sometimes causing death to these animals. Waste not, want not. Items like plastic bags and aluminum cans can take decades, even centuries, to break down, lingering in the environment for long periods. Items like plastic bottles and cigarette butts will take hundreds of years to break down and release, and they release harmful toxins into our soil, affecting plant growth and health. Nuisance to nature. Top it all off, litter destroys a visibly appealing scenery and alters the natural balance of our ecosystem, affecting plant and animal life in perpetu- perpetuity and creates environmental danger. So just want to remind folks, I will tell you, I don't remember the date. I think they have a date coming up in April. Seven Oaks, that group, you know, they do a good job. A friend, Tony Proctor, is out there every week picking up on the back road, and he has his little Facebook post. But a couple of times a year, they do a community cleanup. I got an email today reminding that they will be doing their community cleanup. And they wanted to challenge other communities in our, our town that like them to say, hey, you know, take a day and get to know your neighbors and go out and maybe pick up a little litter around your community, especially the community in which you live. So I, I'll throw that challenge out from Seven Oaks and those folks over there. They're gonna be doing it, maybe some others will. The last thing I had for us tonight, I don't have a slide for this, but I, I wanted to share this with you. I think I sent it to the council, but I just want to, again, give some kudos to our SOAC folks. I just went brain-dead there for a minute. Our, our manager, Courtney, down there, has been working with the Laverne Public Library. And I don't know if you saw this, but it's actually been a press release as well. But she's been working with the Public Library in Laverne, and they will have a pass to SOAC that as library members, they can check that pass out for up to one week. And they can come down and, and as a family, I think it'll cover two adults and four children, I think is what it does. And they can check that out and use that pass to come down and use SOAC. And that's a great way to get other families involved in seeing what SOAC has to offer between the, the climbing walls and the, the, the facilities for birthday parties and those kind of things, as well as all of the events that we have that come in. And I know we, we keep that up to date. They also worked out a deal, I think, that they're doing the same thing with the Discovery Center in Murfreesboro. But I just want to applaud, you know, Courtney and her group getting outside the box and thinking and working with other folks in our community to expose them to the opportunities that's gonna offers our children and stuff in the area of sciences and STEM learning. So congratulations to Courtney and SOAC and the work y'all are doing down there. So, Mayor, Council, that's really all I've got tonight. Thank you.
Jeff?
Happy Easter to everyone. And I'll announce that new attorney in our office, Benjamin Gross, will be starting on Monday, so hopefully you'll get to meet him soon enough.
Great. Raquel?
Congratulations to Courtney and the SOAC and their staff. That's awesome to hear about. Also, I'm sure we have some pictures, but congratulations to Chief and the new, the new truck. I'm sure somebody else up here has a picture to talk about it, but I wanted to say congratulations on housing the new truck. And congratulations, Mike, on the bike trail. And also wanted to wish everyone who celebrates Easter a blessed Easter. And that's all I have, Mayor.
H.G.?
Also, blessed Easter to all the citizens of Smyrna and their families. Shop local and be kind.
Jeff?
I'll also add my wishes for everyone to have a, a hap- happy Easter. Spend it with the ones you love and make it a day of remembering why we're celebrating Easter. I do have a slide tonight. There we go. Thanks to the Smyrna National Gas Department for sponsoring the Town of Smyrna Easter Egg Event. In addition to the sponsorship, it was hosted by the Smyrna Fire Department and Smyrna Police Department. This was enjoyed by ages, children ages one through 12. They all had a chance to visit with the Easter Bunny. H.G. provided us with a rousing bunny hop dance to get the crowd warmed up. And, you know, everyone had a wonderful time there.
How long did it take?
The Easter, oh, it was gone in 60 seconds.
I figured.
Didn't take long.
That's it.
Did it? Steve?
Video of that rousing dance, because I don't remember being there.
No, but would you like to go up down front and show us?
If you do it now, we'll have a video.
You're a very talented.
Thank you. Also, happy Easter. I'm looking forward to, Brian, do we have the buffet completely sold out, or is there still openings?
I think there's still some openings. I would call.
I don't know that they'll be able to.
Yeah, I should say they won't be able to call, so.
Sounds out.
So there may be a spot if you're starving for food. You can stop by maybe on Sunday, see if they can work you in, but.
Be real careful, but.
That's right. I said you might be able to. But I'm looking forward to it. It looks like a great menu. And I know we'll see a lot of folks from the town there. So happy Easter, everybody. Enjoy your weekend. And as Tim said, spend it with family and just don't forget the, the reason for the season.
Mark, Mark?
Chief, enjoyed the ceremony, as Raquel mentioned. Thank you for inviting us out, being a part of the housing ceremony. It's a beautiful truck. It's replacing one that needed to be replaced. And I appreciate your leadership and the Fire Department there just trying to keep our equipment up and making sure the town is continuing to run in a safe manner. We have a new fire hall that's on the way out on Jefferson Pike. It's looking good. I drove by there yesterday. Mike, thank you for inviting us out to the mountain bike trail launch. I think that's another great addition in Sharp Springs Park. I'm already hearing some very good comments about the ability to take their mountain bikes out there now and ride that course. I know a lot of kids that are looking forward to that, too. So with Easter on its way, I too want to wish everybody a happy Easter. I want to remind everybody that it's not about rabbits and, and candy per se. This is about our Lord Savior for resurrection. So that's, that's the way I believe. I hope most people do. But happy Easter to all of you when you celebrate with your families. And I'm not gonna steal the thunder, but there's a certain lady that I know Mary Esther will be talking about here in just a moment that had a celebration. And I do want to wish your dad, Coon, some healing. He was out at the mountain bike ribbon cutting and struggled a lot just to move. He's, he's having issues with his back again. So to your parents, both of them, they're wonderful people, and I just want to wish them the best.
Mayor, I'm sorry, could I add just one more thing that I could add?
You're on the clock.
I know. Our, our PIO's on vacation this week, so there's some things that I'm trying to keep up with. I just wanted to recognize today, Chief Urban and some of his staff went down for a graduation ceremony from the Academy for three new officers. We'll be having a penning ceremony coming up, I'm sure, very soon. But just wanted to recognize Officer Zach Chapman, Officer Morales, and Officer Timothy Russell graduated from the Academy today. Hendersonville, I think, is where they had the, the graduation. But they have now graduated the Academy and they will be joining our police force as full-fledged officers and out on the streets helping us so that we can get that penning ceremony done and get them back here. But I did want to recognize them. I had made a note for Heather. I said she's on vacation this week, a much, much-needed vacation and, and earned vacation. So I did, I appreciate you allowing me to just share that.
Great.
So field trip season is upon us, and SOAC is hosting several groups on site. And we invite guests to call or check out the online calendar beforehand to plan your visit accordingly during these private rentals or field trips. The SOAC will be closed to the general admission and walk-up guest. And you can go on our Town of Smyrna website to check those out. Thank you to all who recently attended the car seat event. Since implementing the program in May, the Fire Department has installed more than 50 car seats. And if you need a car seat installed, you can see us at the May 4th at Kids Safety Day at Smyrna Event Center. Mark, you kind of talked a little bit about this, our new apparatus housing ceremony. So congratulations to the Fire Department for officially putting the newest apparatus into service. Chief Culberson hosted a housing ceremony at Station 1 for the department's newest apparatus, Pierce Ariel Quint. The department and town council members participated in the ceremony, which involved spraying down the apparatus and hand-drying it. This tradition actually stems from the late 1800s when departments used horse-drawn apparatus and crews would wash the horses and equipment and then push the apparatus back into the station in preparation for the next call for service. So we enjoy getting to be a part of that. We've also talked a little bit about the mountain bike trail ribbon cutting. And congratulations to our Parks Department on opening the Sharp Springs Mountain Bike Trail. It's been many years in the makings, and I think it just adds to the quality of life that we have here in the Town of Smyrna. Couple of items for me, congratulations to the MTSU girls' basketball team. They made a great run in the tournament, and I think they represented us well. We got 20 scholarship applications in for the Jeff Coos Scholarship, and we are in the process of reviewing those now. The committee's gonna get together and narrow those down to, we've not decided on the exact amount, and we'll bring those individuals in for an in-person interview, and then we will award the scholarships. Brian and I actually met with a lady last week about a Kiwanis Club being formed here in the Town of Smyrna. So if that's something that you're interested in, you probably can get online and look up. And I think they were gonna be called the Rutherford County Kiwanis.
Rutherford County.
Yeah. Mark, you talked a little bit about Daddy. I wanted to, not to talk about Dad, but talk about how lucky we are to have Stonecrest. Friday night, we had an emergency situation and had to rush Dad to the hospital, and he got transferred to Skyline. But we are so blessed to have Stonecrest Hospital right here in the town limits. And I can't say enough about the staff. Chief, while we were there, we saw a couple of officers have to come in with some people, and to see them in action as well, I appreciate the job they do. But those individuals that are there at that hospital see us at our worst time, and I appreciate all of the staff there, as well as the staff at Skyline that have helped, have helped us out during this time. You also talked about Mama. Mama's special day was yesterday. Was it yesterday? I can't, my days are running together. Was yesterday Mama turned 79 yesterday and had a great birthday. So thank you for recognizing both of them.
Dinner at Stony River.
And dinner at Stony River. That's right. So I also want to wish everyone a very happy Easter. And however you choose to celebrate, I hope it is a special day for you as well. So, Council, anything else? If nothing else, we are adjourned.